Can you turn your mics on for him, please?
Okay.
There's just four of us here?
That's it.
Just four of us? Whoa. Okay. I'd like to call the 525th meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission to Order at this time. And I'd like to give a minute of memorial to Carl, who passed on 24th of December. We had a very lovely memorial service on the 10th of January, so we'll give a moment of silent prayer, please, and I'll make a comment about a bunch of things, I think. Thank you. I attended the memorial service for Carl on the 10th, and all of the speakers from the stage delivered very, very appropriate remarks about Carl and his love of the city, his dedication to the city. I was in complete agreement. But the thing that helped me the most was the fact that following Carl's extended illness, I went to his office and talked to him when he came back. And I was so thankful at the memorial that I took the time to tell him what a great job he had been, has done since I've been on the Planning Commission. I came on the commission in 1999 when Mayor Carlos Casula was here. So what I, my consolation was from having told him when he could hear the good remarks. So I wanted to say tonight, Jack, to you in Carl's extended absence, thank you for excellent leadership of the staff. To the staff members, thank you for excellent work. The greatest compliment I can give to Carl and Jack is their leaders. And I say that, I'm an infantry retired infantry officer, and the highest compliment you can give to an officer is after he's commanded troops, that's a big challenge. And the way Carl handled his staff, he never embarrassed anyone in this hearing. If they had some omissions or some mistakes, he supported them. He added stuff that he implied that he just got some other information that they didn't have. He covered for them. He never stood back and embarrassed anybody. For you on the staff, thank you for the work you've done and are going to do. Also appreciate the way you were led. When you came in new, he put you out front quite early. And no time did he ever embarrass you or any other member for any omissions or mistakes. He stood up and if it's good, you get the credit. If it's bad, I take the blame, all right? So I've been on here since 99. I think Mr. Kish and I are longest seated, but I've been in Laurel since 91, and I'm still the junior guy up here. I don't know what you had to be born here, I can't do that again. I think it's very important, though, that we thank people while they can hear it. I had a stroke in September, and it bothered my left side, my brain, I think it's intact, even though this is supposed to be a portrayal of me up here. I just want to publicly say to the staff, to you, Jack, to my fellow commissioners, thank you for your support and service to the City of Laurel as volunteers. It's a pleasure to work with you all. I truly, truly, truly enjoy it. You do good work. Everybody look at the projects before you vote, and you look at the projects from the point of view of a citizen of Laurel. That's honorable. I also would like to thank Christie, but she's not here tonight. And as far as talking about Carl's love for the City of Laurel, there's a big difference between what you do and what you say. And I'd like to throw a challenge out to those people who claim to love the City of Laurel. During the year of 2015, I think you should put on your agenda to make at least five council meetings and five planning commission meetings, because it allows you to hear about something before it happens, so you don't get caught up in the rumors and the opinions and the other misguided information that can so easily come. If you really love the city, I think you will get off of your chair cushions and come out to at least five city meetings a year, please. The planning commission and the city council meeting, it all impacts you. And one of the, I almost said a bad word, one of the things that bother me as an infantry officer is the apathy in America. We have so much apathy, how many of us vote? The local elections, you see, it's fewer than 10%. And that's criminal if you claim to love where you live, you should be involved. And each of you on the commission and the staff, I just thank you for being here, to take an interest in what happens in the city. And it's really important, because the development of a Rundle Mills and the coming monster called Conterra, if it wasn't for thinking ahead and doing the voting and things that you've done, we would be a whistle stop between Baltimore and Washington DC. And one more thing I'd like to say is, please, vote nationally and locally. It's one of the things that irks me as a retired person from 30 years' service, through tours into Vietnam, is the apathy of vote. I know people who say, "I haven't voted since Nixon was president," and I think that's a shame and scandal. So take an interest in your community, if you really care, and put on your agenda, get off your chair cushions, and attend at least five planning or council meetings or things that are happening that are going to impact you all as citizens of Laurel. The thing I told Carl was, he took care of his people. He put you out there when you first got in the office, he underwrote, underwrote mistakes, if there were mistakes, and there were. He would always add it like, "Well, I got some information that the staffer didn't get before he started telling you what was going on." And he developed his talent, and that's one of the greatest things a manager can do, so that when the organization works as well or better when he is absent, you know leadership has been exercised. So thank you, one and all, and I thoroughly enjoy being up here with you each and every meeting as often as we can. And to you all, thank you for being here, taking an interest in our city. Thank you. Ms. Green, will you call a roll? This new arrangement is different.
Councilman Smalls, Mr. Wilford?
Here.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Kish?
Here.
Mrs. Bateman?
Here.
Mrs. Holland? Chairman Wilford?
Here.
Yado Coram, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. First item is plat of consolidation. Approval of the minutes, excuse me. Your motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one thing I'd like to bring to the attention is, on page five...
Which one? First issue?
Page five of the minutes.
Okay.
Where it's a statement from Mr. Wilson, that I'd just like to clarify that that was not a precursor to the motion. Reading the minutes, it's mentioned here prior to the motion, but that, his concerns on that were actually an add-on to his vote.
Which paragraph are you talking about?
To the actual motion.
Which paragraph on page five are you talking about?
All the way down, it'd be 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down, page five.
Okay, thank you. Any comments by any other commissioner regarding that?
No, I think, just to clarify, he's asking for movement of the placement of that.
Yes.
That he added that on to the motion for, because he recommended, or he voted for, he voted no.
Yes.
I think what he did was, prior to casting his vote, the motion had been called and seconded, and he made his statement with his vote.
Okay.
So the motion, right, as I remembered it.
Right.
So somebody give me some words to put in the minutes that address the thing you're bringing up right now. What should be restated or stated differently?
I think you can just make...
I could just add, roll call, continue with Mr. Wilson, stating, you know, change, put that paragraph in, and then, and then Mrs. Holland voted, and I can say Mr. Wilson voted no, Mrs. Holland also voted no.
Okay, you're clear on that, Chair?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. You don't need to vote on that, I don't believe. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other, I make a recommendation to accept the minutes with the noted changes from Commissioner Wilford.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Green, will you call a roll?
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Chairman Wilford?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Am I looking at item two?
Correct. No, three.
So now we're up to plat consolidation, 912 Montgomery Street, followed by Mr. Scott Horn. Is Mr. Horn here? Okay, do you have something to say? Staff report first.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, this staff report, it's dated 2014, should say 2015.
Yes.
And the request is for four lots to be consolidated into one lot. The property street address is 912 Montgomery Street. It's the old bicycle store. It's 200 feet west of 9th Street on the south side, and it's west adjacent to the Laurel Lock Shop. What this will allow is for the, the proposed use for the building is for an office and three apartments. This will allow the parking and the accessory structures in the rear to be put on the same lot as the building in the front. Staff is recommending approval for the plat of consolidation, because it complies with the subdivision regulations, with a condition to make six minor changes that were noted on the January 6th memo, and to put those six changes on the two Mylars. The surveyor is also here, if you have any questions, for Mr. Gary Lane. And notices were also sent to the surrounding neighbors, as well as a public notice sign was also put up in the middle of December.
Okay, thank you. Any additions? Any questions for the commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, was there any, did you get any comments from the neighbors in that area?
No, no response.
Thank you.
Any other question?
It's the, this might be for the applicant, I'm not sure, Robert. Is the legal use of the north-south alley, is that a permanent change to that? It says that the legal use of it was obtained, is that permanently?
Yes.
You have any other questions? If there are no further questions, are we ready for a vote?
Have anyone signed up for...
You plan on speaking?
My name is Scott Horn, and I came before the council about, probably about two years ago, trying to get all this accomplished, and finally, I think everything is coming to fruition, and that's why I'm here tonight. I think I've completed everything required by the City of Laurel, and my surveyor here graciously has been working with me, and I think we, I think we've dotted all the i's and crossed all the b's.
Any commissioner have a question, Mr. Horn?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Nope, you're not.
I have no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Certainly. Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to move to approve the plat of consolidation for 912 Montgomery Street, and also include the action on resolution number 15-03-PC.
Second?
Second. Please call a roll.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Chairman Wilford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That's taken forward down to six. 15-03. Special exception application number 839-800 regarding Main Street, St. Mary's, the Mills Community Center Playground.
Good evening. The applicants, St. Mary's, they are seeking to amend two previously approved special exceptions, one number 814 for the community center and 826 for the daycare. In their amendment, they're seeking to add an outdoor playground which will be to the rear of the newly constructed community center. Part of where the new outdoor playground will be, will be on five, approximately 5,000 square feet of Pilates, Pilates High School, and St. Mary's is in the process of working out a perpetual easement with the high school to allow them to have the land for the playground. There will be no other changes. The school will still, the daycare center will still operate with 119 children from ages 2 to 12, and operate from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It is recommended that the planning commission recommend approval of the amendment of special exception number 839 to the Board of Appeals with the following conditions: the easement with Pilates High School be recorded and submitted to the city.
Question? Comments? additions?
No.
Go ahead. I heard a...
Now I, yes, now I can't see where my...
Take your time.
I'm just trying to... Is the playground, the way the description was saying that it was, I thought it was south of, but it looked like in the drawing that it's west of. So is it between the back of the, the community center and the apartment? Or is it, it's towards Pilates?
It's towards...
Which is what I always thought, I don't know why when I was looking at the drawing.
It would be in the rear of the playground, it would be in the rear of the community center, the playground, and then part of Pilates High School, currently where like some of their athletic fields are located.
That's what I always thought, but then, for some reason, looking at this, I thought I misunderstood. And Mr. Chairman, one more thing if I could add?
Certainly, help yourself.
What I would like to say, and I just wanted to publicly say that I am a member of St. Mary of the Mills Parish, I have contributed to this community center. Prior to this meeting, I checked with the city attorney, because this is the first time I would be participating in something like this, so I wanted to make sure, as I was asking questions and then also giving my vote, what I needed to do. And I can assure you that my vote will be impartial, but he suggested that I make known that affiliation, so I just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would have to join in on that myself, as a member of St. Mary's, that I would be impartial with my vote also.
No problem with that. Anything else? Are we ready for a roll call, vote?
Was there anyone signed up to speak on this? Nope.
Mrs. Moore, Mrs. Moore, did you want to speak? Miss Moore. Excuse me, Dr. Moore.
Yeah, my name's Sidney Moore, and I live at 811 Main Street. And I wasn't, I just came to observe, but Mr. Kish suggested maybe I wanted to say something. So I'm right across the street, and so I watched the whole thing being done. Initially, I was, had a little trepidation, but the superintendent on the site, Chris Valls, doing a fabulous job, and I'm just amazed at the stonework on the building.
It's beautiful.
And the accuracy of the structure in terms of kind of replicating the old Mills structure, and I think it's a fabulous building. I noticed particularly that when they put the stonework on the front building on Main Street, is the stonework that resembles a church, which is appropriate. But in, you know, a lot of historic buildings, they would add on the back, you know, of the building in different periods of time, and they would have different materials. And it looks just like that, they've just, in front of the, they've got the field stone on the front, and the middle section of the building is sort of a brownstone, and then the back section is another kind of stone. So it's, it really, I think the architect must have thought about that, and the way they did the windows and everything. And I did wonder at the time when I saw the plan in the planning commission office, oh, where the daycare center was going to be, and nobody seemed to know. So I gather they worked that out, and they found a sort of a place south of the building, and that, that'll be just fine. And, and the parking area is, looks like it'll accommodate everything. I was a little worried, because I and other people on the north side of Main Street, we don't really have any garages or anything to park on the street. But I don't think that's going to be so much of a problem, because people will be parking and going in the side of the building. And overall, I'm just awfully pleased at how this has turned out, and want to thank St. Mary's for having such a good architect, that superintendent, and it's going to be a great building, and I think it's going to get a lot of publicity for having a building that's sensitive to the area, to this being a historic district. I really appreciate that, and I'm sure the Laurel Historical Society appreciates that also. Thank you.
Mr. Leighton is Moore?
Yes, Moore.
Horn, I'm sorry. No.
No.
It's Moore.
Yes.
Well, what did you just say? When I said Moore?
Sidney Moore.
Okay, pardon me. You exemplified the kind of Laurel citizen I was talking about. You came in on the planning phase of it before anything happened, you followed up following a decision being made, and now you're testifying to the great job that was done. And that's, that's what we need from the citizens who claim that they love Laurel. That kind of involvement is precious, so thank you very much. That kind of involvement is precious, so thank you very much.
Hey, maybe you should, uh, send a letter to the editor about that, to get people more involved, because it's a historic city.
Thank you, we'll take that into consideration. Okay. Where are we now?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no additional questions?
Need a vote?
I will make a motion, um, for, for special exemption application number eight three nine, eight hundred Main Street, Saint Mary of the Mills Community Center Playground, filed by Saint Mary of the Mills Church, for recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, a second please.
I will second that, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Chairman Welford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping me straight. Okay. Am I correct in saying we're up to item eight?
That's correct.
Special exception application number eight four zero dash PNC Bank, freestanding ATM at three ninety Main Street.
Good evening again. I do. The applicant, PNC Bank, is seeking special exception approval to place a freestanding ATM on the rear of the property at three ninety Main Street. The property is owned C V for Commercial Village. The ATM currently is already on the property, however, it's been inoper- inoperable and is boarded up until a decision by the Board of Appeals will be rendered. Memos went to the various agencies within the commu-, the City of Laurel community as well as out. The police department had concerns regarding lighting and security. However, after he, the chief of police visited the site, he saw that there was lighting there in a security camera in the rear, and also the ATM already currently has a camera inside of there, so he was spying with what was there and thought it was sufficient. It is recommended that the planning commission recommend approval of the special exception number eight forty to the City of Laurel Board of Appeals with the following conditions. The applicant must obtain City of Laurel permits for the ATM and receive historic district approval because it could be seen from the street.
Any questions?
Is the applicant with us tonight?
Yes, there are representatives.
Okay. Please, come up, please. And is this, uh, Mr. Nara?
Correct.
Thank you.
Just state your name and address, please.
My name is John Nara. Office address? Seven zero five nine Layer Road Northwest, Washington DC, two zero zero one.
Thank you.
Go ahead, for any questions you have?
Um, one question I had, will that, um, be used for a walk-up also, or only drive?
Only drive.
Only drive-through, what if somebody wanted to walk up to it and use it?
In those, in, um, I suppose they could, just like at any other drive-through, they could, they could walk up into the drive-through and use the ATM. There's just not, no mechanism to prevent someone from doing that.
Um, and-
It, it would clearly be in a drive-by. There, there is a walk-up ATM in the front of the building.
I was going to say, it's on the front.
And is it operational twenty-four seven?
Yes.
Um, I know they said that the lighting was sufficient, but when I drove by there in the night, it just seemed like the majority of the light was projected away from the box itself, and it seemed like that, um, light could be maybe adjusted a little bit to cast more light onto it. And I also noticed that both of those security cameras aren't even aimed at it. I don't know if that's to be changed later, but right now, one is aiming towards Fourth Street, and the other is more, uh, towards the, uh, center of the parking lot. It might capture so, uh, edge of it, but it looks to me like that needs to be aimed, uh, right at it.
Uh, the, the security camera within the unit captures most of the activity directly in front of the unit. Uh, but I can bring that point up to the PNC security team. They can adjust those cameras or add a camera need be.
And they, well, the other thing I've thought about is in terms of, for your point about the light, because it's turned off now. When it's turned on, it in itself is going to generate light coming from that also, correct? Pretty much?
Not the ATM itself, it's just a screen.
Just a screen? Okay.
There's, there's not a, there's, there is no signage or lit surround on it. But the light could be adjusted, or an added light could be.
Even the, uh, building alongside of it, um, where you have two of the really large fixtures, the building, the old Building and Loan Association building, it has four across the back, and it really lights up their area back there quite a bit. Another thing I was curious of, is that going to be, um, loaded by PNC employees or a service such as, uh, Brink's or something like that?
Well, the, uh, it's all, lane from the interstate end of PNC. Uh, that will be loaded probably by our army for the lane outside the building where they walk up, they can load it from the inside, or staff it from the inside. So it will be armed, it will be armed, it will be responded to.
And would they do that daily or weekly?
They're going to use the machine, uh, you know, the value of it is being loaded. They'll have to see is either unit is, and then schedule will be set up for that.
So I guess you would, uh, determine what is an average need per day, and then, uh, kind of try to keep it to a minimum amount that's actually kept in there.
Excuse me, would you mind just coming up, just so we can have record, just your name and address that for, for staff to have as part of the record? That would be appreciated, and thank you for your answers.
The other thing, uh, the paperwork we have, I see one light. All right? And I'd like to see, uh, more light, especially away from the machine, because usually, uh, people with bad intentions don't want to be in the spotlight, and same thing with cameras. So redundancy would be very helpful. Will you include that? Please, will you?
Steve Henry, H E N R Y, Senior Representative for PNC Bank of the GWA area. Uh, my home address is at Upper Marlboro, thirty-two ten Maracanda Lane in Upper Marlboro.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Do any of the other branches have that kind of service?
The standalone ATM?
Uh, well, drive, drive-up.
Yes. Many of them do.
And they, are they placed prior to your drive-up window?
In new branches, no. Um, they're planned underneath the canopy, but in retrofit locations like this-
It's retro.
It, it's based on site conditions. So, um, often they're before, it really depends.
It seems like there could be a conflict there, somebody wanting to use the ATM and somebody wanting to use the drive-up window, and, and, uh, maybe somebody at the ATM and the person behind them sees that there's nobody at the window, and they get a little anxious and want to go around him and squeeze into the window, and, you know, those kind of, kind of, uh, things happen, you know, when people are in a big hurry and stuff. It seemed to me, uh, it was in an awkward position. But I think my biggest concern is the, um, the lighting and the cameras. Everything else is of some concern, but I'm sure that can be worked out with the, uh, situation where it's placed there. The police didn't seem to have any problem with it.
Right.
Good planning is always better than, uh, oops.
Absolutely.
And redundancy is also very important. Uh, we don't want to have to read in the Laurel Leader about something happening there because it's insufficient lighting, or no record for the perpetrator. Any other questions? Ready for a vote?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend a, a, let's see, it's not approval. For special exception application number eight four zero, PNC Bank, freestanding ATM, three ninety Main Street, filed by PNC Bank N.A., for recommendation to the Board of Appeals with the following conditions, as listed in the staff report. Number one, the applicant must obtain City of Laurel permits for the ATM. Number two, receive historic district approval. And as per our discussion here in the agreement of the applicant, number three, the addition of a minimum of one additional light.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
Seconded, then moved and seconded. Mr. Kish, if you didn't miss it, Sarah. Okay, are we ready, anything else?
Oh, right, there was no, no, I'm sorry, there was no, no final action, no action on resolution, so, sorry, Bateman.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Chairman Welford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That was number eight, we're up at number nine. Number nine, City of Laurel Community Redevelopment Authority, Eastern Main Street, Avondale Mill Neighborhood Plan. For recommendation to the mayor and city council. We've got that, okay, well, the director's got that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. What is before you is a neighborhood plan, the Eastern Main Street, Avondale Mill Neighborhood Plan. This was prepared at the direction of the Community Redevelopment Authority. The Community Redevelopment Authority, uh, was created under Article nine hundred of the city charter. The regulations that the CRA follows is contained in chapter two of the city code. They are charged with preparing urban redevelopment plans and carrying the plans out. This was prepared at their direction, at their last meeting, uh, last month. Uh, they reviewed this and had forward this to you for review. Uh, what you, under the code, are to do is to review this for compliance with the city master plan. The content of this was, in fact, drawn from the master plan and the community redevelopment plan for the entire city that was approved in two thousand twelve. What this does is goes to a smaller area within the city, a target area, which you showed on page twenty-one. The map that is bounded by the river on the north side, C Street on the west, Fiddy Alley on the south side, and Second Street are, uh, U S one north on the east side. That's phase one. Phase two is north of Fiddy Alley, going down to Laurel Avenue, and is bound on the east and west sides by U S one, uh, Washington Boulevard and Second Street. Now, the purpose of the plan is to enable the CRA to focus on these two particular areas to purchase property for redevelopment. And that's the, uh, the entire purpose of, of a neighborhood plan, is to allow you to focus down on a particular area that there's an interest in. Uh, this is the first neighborhood the CRA has chosen. Uh, they've already purchased one property, the old Comedy Club, within, uh, phase one area. And they need this in order to continue the progress in these two areas. Uh, we have reviewed this, and like I say, it contains portions of both the CRA plan adopted in two thousand twelve, as well as goals, objectives, and policies that are ca-, contained in the master plan. So it doesn't change zoning, doesn't change land use. Just enables the CRA to focus on these two areas, uh, within the East Main Street, Avondale Mill area. And there's a resolution that would recommend that this be adopted by the mayor and city council, should you choose.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other, any questions? The director? How about you, gentlemen?
No, I haven't, not at this time.
No questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve for recommendation to the mayor and city council, um, the redevelopment authority of Eastern Main Street and Avondale Mill Neighborhood Plan. And also, uh, for that to include the action on resolution number fifteen dash oh four dash P C.
Yes.
Second?
Seconded, thank you, roll call, please.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Chairman Welford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Am I seeing that we're on? Am I looking at twelve? Fifteen oh four was included in that, do we need to take another vote relative to the resolution?
No, sir. The number thirteen, election of the chairman.
Okay, well, ten. Item thirteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Is there, are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yes, Mr. Kish.
Uh, could we put this on hold until we have a full body here?
I think that's an excellent idea.
Very good idea.
I think that'd be an excellent idea. Somebody approved that suggestion.
Do we need any motion or anything?
Yes, we'll need a motion to table till the next meeting.
Yes.
I make a motion that we table, uh, the, uh, election of chairperson till the next meeting when we have a full house.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Chairman Welford?
Yes, indeed.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. According to that, we're ready to adjourn. What have I forgotten?
The gavel.
That's all? And if this, in, in, in condition with this, Mr. Mayor, this is supposed to be me, a representation of me. Do you notice the mustache? Okay. All right, I'm going to clear the meeting. Thank you very much.